In your name you pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's finish the roll please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward one.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward two. Carrie Roth, Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward four.
Here.
Carrie Fox, Ward five.
Here.
And Cap Ram, Ward six.
Here.
Thank you, Sam. First order of business is the approval of our council meeting from our September 1st meeting. And you've had an opportunity to look these over, council, for a few days now, and have an opportunity to make any edits at this time. If there are any, now's the time to share them with us. If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. Home favorite, Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Mr. Manino, get us started off with Z 22-02, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a second reading. The project has been properly posted and advertised. Appears to be no conflicts of interest, and it was reviewed based on the standards for exercise of zoning powers. With that, since the first reading, we had noted that Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning from R 15 to MU with three enumerated conditions. After further review, the third condition is not necessary, so that that is the one change since the first reading. The Planning Commission did recommend approval, again with those three conditions. The third one duplicates the second one, so again, it's not necessary to put it in there if you choose to recommend approval on this second reading.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll open up a public hearing for Z 22-02 and ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against to do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z 22-02 and turn it over to council for consideration or further discussion.
Make a motion to approve, please.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Z 22-03, this is a first reading. Mr. Manino?
Thank you again, Mayor and Council. The applicant has representation now, and they have requested that this be pulled off the agenda and reheard on October 6th and October 20th. Staff has agreed to re-advertise for those particular dates. I did speak to approximately five folks that were involved in the Planning Commission meeting and told them that they would be requesting this, and they're not here because of them knowing that this request has been made. Again, I did forward or in discuss it with the mayor, city attorney, and city manager. So with that, staff would like to re-advertise this for October 6th and October 20th. It was already advertised for second reading on October 6th.
Absolutely. There's no action needed by council on that, so if you'll move on to Z 22-04.
Yes, thank you. Again, this is a request to rezone approximately 46 acres from PB to R 20. This was originally a portion of Carter Grove that fronts on Bates Road. There were conditions in the development agreement that didn't allow access to Bates Road into the actual development itself without approval from the county. That is a county-maintained road, and they control all the driveways and access points on Bates Road and subsequently with the city of Cartersville. With that, they have met with the county commissioner. They have a written letter that's probably included in your package about pulling this portion out from Carter Grove and doing their own state-type development, and rezoning it to R 20 was recommended to Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend approval of rezoning this from PB with conditions to R 20 with no conditions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Randy on this item at this point? Thank you, sir. I will now open up a public hearing for Z 22-04 and ask anybody wishing to speak to speak for or against to step forward at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing for Z 22-04. Counsel, are there any other discussion or questions that you have on this item tonight? If there are none, this is a first reading. We'll take this up at our first meeting in October. Randy, you continue to run the show tonight. T 22-02.
The next two are proposed text amendments to the existing sign ordinance. They are applicant-driven. With that, the first one, as you know, T 22-02 is a request by Mission Baptist Church to extend the area where illuminated or electronic LED signs would be allowed. They're currently not allowed on Jones Street. They're recommending a proposed text amendment to that sign ordinance that would extend certain ways down Jones Street that would allow their church to place a two-by-four-foot electronic reader on their existing sign, to modify their existing sign. Planning Commission did hear this. They did have some concerns and discussion about brightness on that particular sign, and the applicant did state that they thought it was an adjustable brightness level, and the applicant is here. They do have more information on that if necessary. But with that, Planning Commission did recommend approval, 6-0, for this proposed text amendment.
Relative to that text amendment and brightness of signs, I don't see how there's any way that you could write into a text amendment how bright something can be, but what would be the...
Well, we do have...
Is there a process in place that we've got if there's an issue?
We do have Lumen standards in there now that we didn't originally have. Now, I don't... My code enforcement office doesn't have Lumen meters to go out there and measure that, but if it looks too bright and we go ask somebody to turn it down, typically it'll get turned out.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. During these, these are not public hearings, but council, if you have any questions, since the applicant is here, if there's any question or that you would like from the applicant or like to ask the applicant, you can ask... You can tell me you've got it, and I'll ask them to step forward. Anybody questions?
Maybe I have a question for Randy. Under this sign, like we see some of these smaller electronic signs, I think like the schools have them. I think there's a couple of... Now, they can't have any moving... There's no... They can't have...
No, there is one sign in the city that was grandfathered prior to that being written into the ordinance. It can change every so many seconds to a static message, but it doesn't allow the movement in motion.
Okay. Do you know what the... I guess the...
It's either six or 10 seconds, isn't it?
Yeah, six or 10.
It's 10 seconds.
It's 10 seconds. Six per minute, that's what I was... Couldn't remember that. It was one way or the other.
Do you know what the purpose of the... They're wanting the sign, is it going to replace the...
Yeah, if you see the reader board that's on their existing sign, they're going to...
Replace that.
It's about a two-foot-by-four-foot section. They are here if you want... Would like to ask them, but they did present to the Planning Commission.
Just wanted to also, too, where the sign is located and where it is on the street. It would enhance more or less the notice of what's going on at the church, and the way it's placed, and speaking with the pastor and the committee, it won't overwhelm or drive a passerby.
One other note, your notes did say that it was approved 5-0-1. This was actually 6, approved 6-0, so those notes on the actual voting on it, there was a mistake.
Okay, thank you. Good, council?
Mm-hmm.
This is the first reading. We'll take this up for consideration in our second meeting, or our next meeting, the first meeting in October.
October 6th.
October 6th, thank you. Moving on to T 22-03.
Again, this is another proposed applicant-driven text amendment to our current sign ordinance. This is to the billboard section. Currently, the billboard ordinance does not allow digital or LED signs on certain roads. Only allowed on state roads. The applicant is requesting that it be amended to add a small portion of, I believe it was Old Mill Road, and with that, Planning Commission did hear it, did listen to their justification, and did recommend approval of this 5-0-1. This was the one with 5-0-1 vote, not the previous one, even though the notes said it was the same on both.
Okay. Do you have any questions for Randy at this time?
Did the applicant discuss about, are they going to seek to elevate the sign higher or are they going to keep it the same height that they have now?
I believe they were going to keep it the same, but I would ask them, they do have representation here.
Thank you. I would ask the applicant to step forward, please, whoever's... And if you would, please, give your name and address for our clerk.
Yeah, my name is Robert Walker, 15 South Public Square. I've got Beth Tilly here with me. To answer your question, Mr. Roth, about the sign, at this point, yes, the plan is to, you know, is to keep the sign as it is. I mean, we will have to go through a permitting phase. If this amendment is passed, this will allow us to be able to submit an application that can be considered by the city, and we would have to go through a permitting phase and comply with the city's regulations. And if there were any differences other than what is required, you know, by the city's ordinance, then we would presumably have to go through a various process and come before the BZA and/or the city council, so.
Next question, was this the existing sign that you made larger or higher?
No, we have talked about doing a 10 by 30, which is what we understand. I believe is the size of the sign different than that, correct? Yeah, so...
So the same size?
Yes.
I know one of the concerns that comes up with digital billboards is the amount of light limiting the lumens during nighttime hours. Is that something that would be considered? And, well, let's start with that one.
Yeah, well, that will happen. The way this billboard is equipped, if you could go another slide, one more, that just shows 1,000 feet. All right, this is a photograph. I will say this, and I will answer that question directly. This is a photograph that was taken two nights ago at about 9:10 PM. This is sitting in the parking lot of what was the former Shaw building there. You can see there's a great amount of lighting in that area already, that parking lot particularly. I mean, it's... It looks like daylight almost. They have... There's, if you can move forward one more slide. This is actually sitting in the parking lot of the gas department, looking back towards that billboard. So again, you can see the amount of light in that area. But to answer your question, Mayor, directly, the way these... This billboard will be equipped, and it will be just like the billboard that is that Tilly Holdings has at the intersection of, at 41 and South Bridge. And so the way those billboards are built, they have a photo cell that is on that billboard that operates, and that photo cell automatically detects the time of day and the ambient light outside and adjusts itself to account for that. So we talked to the sign expert, the people who would install the sign and install that sign at 41 and South Bridge. The amount of... They measure light by what's something called nit. And I don't want to get too far in the weeds of the science, but a digital billboard like that typically during the daylight hours would emit light of, at what they... Is 7,500 nit is in average. At nighttime, it is turned down to a point where it emits 200 nit, and so it's about 2% to 2.5% of the daylight... Of the daylight brightness levels. If that... The billboard also has two additional safeguards. If the photo cell on that thing fails for some reason, then the sign automatically reverts to the lowest nighttime setting, and then if the whole... If the sign were to lose connection completely to the computer that maintains it, it goes completely black. And so the brightness levels can be adjusted remotely by the sign operator. And of course, the city's ordinance has a requirement that the city register or have a person on call, which Mr. Manino referenced earlier, that can, you know, make immediate adjustments to the sign if needed. And Ms. Tilly was asked that question in the Planning Commission phase and assured the Planning Commissioners that they would work with the city and make any sort of adjustments that needed to be made.
I'm trying to remember that billboard. Does it have... I know it's a static billboard now. Does it have lights shining on it at night?
Yeah, so, yeah, if you go back one slide, Dave, it's a little closer. It has, well, right there. You can see the face of it is lit up.
Okay, I see.
Yeah. There's actually two 400-watt directional floodlights on each side that point directly up. And so we talked with the engineer again that will put the sign up, and he has assured us that the amount of light that is emitted into the atmosphere, it's hard to measure, right, because, you know, it's... There's... The levels are different depending on the color in the ad and that kind of thing. But on average, the light emitted will be approximately the same, and with certain dark colors, we believe may even be less light that's actually emitted into the... They call it, the industry term is sky glow. It's that, you know, if you've ever looked out over an area with a commercial area, you have that glow that comes up. It's the light that's emitted into the atmosphere. And so we believe that, you know, that will... And in fact, if you move ahead a couple of slides, there's an aerial. This is actually something... Formetco is the company I keep referring to that will put the sign in place if it is allowed, and they have performed these calculations, which may be hard to see, but this is based on a 200-nit number, which I mentioned earlier. But also, it's based on 100% white at night, which that would never happen. That's if you turn the thing on, as bright as it would go, you know, every white light is activated. And so it shows that at 250 feet in these various directions is where they've measured that the amount of foot candles, which they use to measure light that's emitted, would actually be only slightly more over what is just the ambient light. So in other words, the regular light that's in the area. So again, when we talk to them about how much light's actually emitted by the current billboard, we think it'll be actually more than likely a little bit less.
Bottom line is, you feel that with that night setting, there'll be negligible amount of additional light that would be in the area?
Yes, I... We surely believe that, yes.
That's what I wanted to know.
And, you know, again, we will certainly, if there are any issues with the sign, we will have somebody here locally, obviously, that can handle it, which is, you know, something somewhat unique about the fact that the Tillies have control of this billboard, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion amongst council or questions for staff? All right, again, we'll take this up for consideration on the second reading at our meeting on October the 6th. Chief Carter, you are up, and Mr. Dixon, you're on deck.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I come before you tonight respectfully to request the approval for the city of Cartersville to accept a transfer of approximately 8.5 acres. It's located on Carter Grove Boulevard. Acceptance of this property from Carter Grove, Atlanta, of the Avante Properties Group, and the transfer of this ownership will be used for the future construction of Cartersville Fire Department Station 5. The current document that is attached to your agenda has been reviewed by city staff and legal, and we're just simply asking for formal approval to accept this property.
Based on discussions we've had, this is a great location for us at Carter Grove. That area will be a good service area, particularly to serve the areas that the chief has mentioned previously in River Shoals, Carter Grove, with the expansion of the school system out there. Obviously, the next question we're going to have is if the council approves this in the future years, is that a paper of a new building and for staffing with that?
I guess the other thing to note is, in the original development agreement for Carter Grove back in 2004, aroundish, there was a provision in that for land for a school, which is now underway, and land for a fire station. They were only really committed to two acres, I believe?
Yes.
Five acres, no, they were looking at.
Okay.
And originally, that particular piece of property was back deeper into the entire complex, and the school portion was eventually brought forward towards the front. But it works out better for us here on this front side, because what this will actually do for us, it's going to improve our coverage area dealing with River Shoals, the school system, Carter Grove, and those are far-reaching areas that we have. We do have Station 3, for example, that is on Old Mill that we just constructed several years ago. Currently, Station 3 being first into Carter Grove, at certain times, they tend to have an extended delay. Also, a problem that we're going to encounter here is when the school system gets open, as you can see, traffic down Old Alabama is increasing. Our call volume in this area is growing, and right now, currently, we're pulling assets from other parts of town to cover this general area. So the acceptance of this property is really key for our long-term strategic protection of our community. We would appreciate your approval of that and your future considerations.
Thank you. Any questions for Chief? If not, the motion is in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
If I, Kate, I would like to really thank Randy Public Works, Randy Manino, and everybody's been involved in this. We've been working on this for a considerable amount of time, and without their... Without their help, we'd never be able to be here.
I echo those comments. Randy's been involved with Chris Easterwood several times, trying to coordinate this, and it's definitely, obviously, saved us this city, and also, there's already a stormwater detention pond back there on the property, so there's going to be saves to this city when we do build the station on our costs. Thank you.
Thank you, all. Thank you. Mr. Dixon, you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. GDOT is reconstructing a bridge in Floyd County where the gas system has an eight-inch main in conflict with their work. The main is mostly in right-of-way, but there's a small portion of prescribed easement that we are eligible to be reimbursed for relocation. This resolution states that the city agrees to enter into an actual cost utility agreement with GDOT to receive payment for work performed on this 9.82% of the project that is off right-of-way. The estimated cost paid to the city is $28,614.99. This has been reviewed by the city attorney's office, and council's approval of the resolution is recommended.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? If there's none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greer, you've got a couple items tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First item for tonight is a budgeted annual support renewal for our Mimecast security solution. This is our service that's cloud-based, protects the city's email system. Total amount is $24,001.26 from CDWG, and is recommended for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
The next item, FibroCom's requesting authorization to purchase a replacement bucket truck for Truck 195, which is a 40-foot service bucket truck that's 21-years-old. We recommend the approval to purchase a 45-foot service bucket truck on a Dodge chassis from Terex for a cost of $153,821. This will be budgeted in fiscal year 2324.
I know we've discussed... What's the lead time on getting this? I know some of the lead times have been...
If the order in tomorrow, maybe quarter of 1 of 2024. If for a Dodge, for a Ford, 25, 26.
And as Stephen mentioned, they're using one basically as a hand-me-down from the electric apartment, but the growth of the fiber department necessitates a newer one and one that's actually a little taller than, what's the...
It's about five-foot tall reach, but that makes a big difference.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Mr. Forsyth, you're up next.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item is, back in March of this year, you approved the replacement of the sewer line on Oak Street, the entire length of that street, about 364 feet. During the course of that work, we encountered some abandoned storm drains and lines and a considerable amount of concrete in the way of our construction. That increased the price by about $8,000 on that project. It was originally approved at about $86,000. It came in $8,000 over, and I'm back before you to request the payment to landing contracting for the additional $8,000 work.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir. Regarding the same project, Oak Street Sewer Line, we had to open cut the entire length of that street, and instead of just patching it back, we're going to... We would like to overlay the entire length of the street, like I said, 364 feet, with an inch and a half of pavement overlay. We're requesting that you approve the low bidder Bartow Paving Company for $16,233.75.
Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. As Chief McCann's bringing his way up, I need to add one item to the agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to...
Add an item to the...
Thank you. Second. All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Chief, you've got three now. Go ahead.
Okay, this is the fifth and final payment for our tasers that were purchased in 2018. It's $14,000. It'll be paid for with federal asset forfeiture funds. The next... Sorry.
It's all right. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
We looked at replacement camera systems, body cameras and in-car systems with FibroCom, and we've decided on a system that's going to work well for us and provide us with new features. It's Utility Associates Incorporated. It's out of Decatur, Georgia. The purchase of the equipment and installation is $300,017.675, and then after that, each year, the storage in the cloud's going to be $95,315, and the purchase of the equipment will be paid for with SLOSH funds, and the purchase of the cloud after that will be paid for with federal asset forfeiture or with general funds.
Okay. And just so people know, right now, you're working off two different systems, and one of them's been obsolete, or both of them have had troubles getting service.
Is that... Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We're working on two different systems. We're trying to get down to one. Digital Ally's obsolete. They don't support it anymore. WatchGuard, we're having issues with support, which is pretty much non-existent, so we're trying to move to one system and have all the storage in the cloud and not have servers and that sort of thing.
Perfect, thank you. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And then that added item, please.
Yes, the last added item is purchase of replacement vehicles. I wish to purchase six vehicles, five patrol vehicles, one admin vehicle. The total cost of those vehicles, and the best bid is from Brennan Motors in Unadilla, Georgia. It's $219,800, and I'm requesting the bid not to exceed $320,000 to include all the equipment, striping, sirens, blue lights, et cetera, that goes into those vehicles.
And you had determined, you mentioned in the work session, this is what you determined to be the best bid based on delivery time of those vehicles?
Exactly. They... Brennan Motors has the vehicles in stock where the other two, one was 30 weeks' delivery time, the other one was 12 to 16 weeks' delivery time. So that's the reason I say it's the best.
Thank you. So if council, if you will do that, not exceed, and then also mention the best bid approval, I would appreciate that. Are there any questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve the purchase not to exceed $320,000 and take the best bid.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor to Kate by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Morgan, you're up. Mr. Reinhardt be warming up over there.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. I wanted to bring before you a program and concept design from Croft Architects. We want to look at renovating the electric department. They've got some fit issues. The building is approximately forty years old, thirty-nine years old. Just asking for your approval up to twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, and this is the program and the concept design to lay out the building.
Okay. Any questions for Freddie on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor to capable saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reinhardt, if you will finish us out with the financial report.
I'm a mayor and counsel. We will be looking at the July tw- twenty-twenty-two and comparing it to July twenty-twenty-one. The general fund revenues increased over last year by about two-hundred thousand dollars. Expenses increased by a hundred and seven thousand dollars. Areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis, the local office and sales tax have been increased there by about sixty-eight thousand dollars. Building permits and inspection fees have an increase there of about two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars. The water and sewer fund revenues increased over last year by nine-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by twenty-one thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues have increased over last year by one-point-eight million dollars. Expenses also increased by seven-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers, increases to the transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by eight-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Expenses increased by eight-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel costs, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase electricity, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues decreased over last year by five hundred dollars. Expenses decreased by seventeen thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, and increased capital expenses. In the solid waste fund, revenues decreased from last July by two-hundred-and-ninety-five, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. This, and expenses decreased by twenty-five thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses and decreased operating expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by eighteen thousand dollars. Expenses decreased by twenty-two thousand dollars. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the cash position for the month of July two thousand and twenty-two, unrestricted cash increased, also restricted cash increased. The balances in the Splotch funds, Splotch two thousand and three is fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents. Splotch two thousand and fourteen, two thousand, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and ten cents. And Splotch twenty twenty is six million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and sixty-nine, sixty cents, sorry.
Anything else?
Just a couple things to point out. The general fund, obviously, is first month of the year, so we're starting out. The sales tax numbers are improving still. The building permits and inspection fees on the separate report you had to hand out, obviously improving. I think those departments, they got, Randy's got two-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand.
License and permit?
Okay, yeah, I would expect that. So that's, that's gonna trend a little bit better. Obviously, all the utility funds are in positive. One thing to point out on the solid waste, that two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand for the month of July is a, is a good number. The five-twenty-one probably included a lot, GMA lease pool payment.
Yes.
Because the two-seventy-six is actually more, slightly more than our budgeted revenue for the month. So we're still trending well in all the other funds.
I'll also note out, for people that pay attention to such things, and I'll continue to point it out, because it's true. The cost of what your utility bill is, is relative to the cost of what we pay for both gas and electric. As Tom had mentioned, expenses have increased in gas by seven-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand dollars. The increased cost of the purchase gas is seven-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars.
Correct.
When you look at the increase in electric, that's increased eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars. The increased purchase of electric, cost of the purchase of electricity is eight-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars, which exceeds that. Again, I point this out because, you know, the public needs to understand, we're experiencing those costs, and while we're doing everything to keep costs as low as we can in other areas and work as efficiently as we can, as we always do, those are two things, major expenses that are not in our control, and it's every single residence, business, and family in this community, and it's one of those things that's kind of beyond our control. So just wanted to put a highlight on that. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right.
Quick question. I wonder what the percentages, what month will those kick in on the Splotch?
January twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, January. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of quick things before we get out of here. Busy weekend in the neighborhood. Want to make sure everybody remembers that we've got the Kitty Day Parade on Saturday, along with the Rosalawn Festival on Saturday and Sunday. Also downtown on Saturday, in addition to the farmer's market in the morning. There's a sip and stroll event that's put together by Love Travels on Saturday. And then on Sunday, as you know, we approved a festival zone with Ms. Constanza Sweeney. That international festival will be taking place downtown on Sunday. So all kinds of reasons to come down and enjoy our fair city.
And Rosalawn, too, this weekend, right?
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay. There was a lot to it.
I'm slow. Had a long night.
Carrie, I zoned me out, too. Don't worry about it. Is there any other business that needs to come for, counsel? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm listening. Stay cool.